All right, we want to welcome everyone tonight to the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education meeting on Monday, May 14th, 2018. With that, I call the meeting to order. Is there an approval of... would somebody like to read the approval of the revised agenda? We'll be pulling the public hearing BA 18323 and item BA 18333 regarding green communications three contract tonight, so that's the reason for the revised agenda.
I move that the revised agenda of Monday, May 14th, 2018 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Anne Holt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. And tonight, we have the pleasure of having recognitions of some of our longtime staff members and all of the work that they've done for the school district. And so if the board members would like to come down front with me, we'll go ahead and do our recognition.
I'm Linda Nagle, the Executive HR Director here for the Cedar Rapids School District, and I have the distinct pleasure of getting to introduce all of our recognition individuals who are celebrating 25 years, 30 years, 35, and 40 years. So a very long time with the district, and we thank them for all their service. So as we get started, let's just kind of think about what was happening 25 years ago. 25 years ago, just a couple of tidbits. Gas was $1.16. No, I know it. I know it. You could go to the movies for $4.14, and this was the era of the Beanie Babies, if anybody remembers the Beanie Babies. Yeah, all right. So I'll go ahead and introduce our 25-year recognition here, starting with Angela A. Lurz. Is she here? Nope. Mary Blocker. Oh, I should mention that we have some of the folks are here. Those that aren't, I will still read their names just so that we can recognize them. So Mary Blocker, Ellen Bloomquest, Judith Brunns, Mary Bun, Elise Beverley, Ken Sharpar, Nicholas Daniel, Molly Donahue. I know I saw her. Barbara Hart. Heather Haislett, Susan Holton, Marsha Hunt, Suzanne Jennings, Kelly Kiernan, Tammy Kounis, Sherry Kopecchi, William Lammers, Arice Landrum Colbert, Suzanne Leaher, Gail Leggett, Kathleen Linott, JP McDonald, Stephanie Newport, Deborah Palmer, Angela Rodriguez, Jaclyn Rose, Deborah Singbinga. Sorry, I knew I was going to mess that up. I'm so sorry. Chad Zabo, Ted Tabber, Todd Tabber, sorry, thank you, Carrie Thompson, Cheryl Tuleski Marsh, Luann Volk. Those are our 25-year recognition. Congratulations, 25. Now we're moving on to 30. So 30 years ago, gas was 91 cents, 91 cents, a movie ticket, 350, stamps were 24 cents, and eggs were 65 cents. Woo! All right, 30 years. Denise Egler, oh, sorry, yep, Denise Egler, sorry, Carrie Ash, Randy Cooper, James Dostal, Catherine Fritz, Amy Hannish, Teresa Keely, Karen Leeskamp, Cheryl Lindo, Julie Messenger, John Pelacheck, Karen Pink, and Melissa Summers, Susan Van Wart. 35 years we have. In 35 years, milk was $1.35. This was the final episode of MASH, MASH fans in here. It was also the land of the Cabbage Patch Dolls. You remember the Cabbage Patch Dolls? All right, 35 years. Joseph Benedict, Margaret Crosby, Timothy Katmeyer, and Vicki Seaton. Steve Wallace. And we have one 40-year who's not here tonight, but 40 years, he should be celebrated. And 40 years ago, gas was 63 cents. The average house price was $13,650. I'll take that. Movies, Grease, and Saturday Night Fever. Who doesn't remember those two movies? And that goes to Charles Stallman. So 40 years for Charles Stallman. So let's give everyone a round of applause. From everyone at the district, we'd like to just thank you so much for your dedication and your focus and your everything that you've given throughout the number of years, 25, 30, 35, 40 years. That's a long time and a good part of your life, and we just so deeply appreciate the service that you've given us, so thank you so very much.
Do we have a song?
Oh, awesome. Please! You should. You should say something like "Saturday Night Fever." Or "Take This Job."
Hey, it's School Board Recognition Month. Are we waiting for that? All right, very good. So I know how to clear a room. This is good. No, no, there's more. So when Linda asked if any... who remembers Grease and the other movie, which I can't remember, I don't think Raphael does, so anyway, that's just a little joke. So, uh, so the administration, so I'll get this thing rolling here. So the administration is proud to join public education systems throughout the state to salute our school board members and celebrate public education during Iowa's annual School Board Recognition Month in May. The committee every month is designed to recognize the contributions made by Iowa's nearly 1,900 school board members, including our Board of Education, who are charged with governing public education under state law. Our school board members are locally elected, non-salried, public officials entrusted with the task of providing the direction for the education of students across Iowa. So that's sort of the written part, but I just want to say a couple of more personal things while I have you guys up here. So a few years back, you took a risk and hired me with the charge to work with the board, staff members, students, families in the community to close the educational gaps that exist in our system among a variety of other important work. And so about a year into that process, we identified some belief systems that we talk about frequently. There are things like equity and leadership and innovation. And then from there, you gave direction about the need for and desire to have a bold strategic plan. And so we are embarking on a five-year bold strategic plan that we are working on together that we believe is going to deliver on the promise of a great education for all of our kids. And so you'll remember the pieces of that in our five-year strategic plan. There are story, our workforce, student learning in the form of the profile of a graduate, intercultural development, and a facilities plan. And we have made significant progress together on that work, along with the work of lots of other folks sort of pulling in the same direction. So it probably should be noted that of one of the highlights this year, that is our 15-year facility plan, and we're going to talk a little bit more about where we are with that tonight. And I would just want to say this, we're making progress for our students, and while there's more work to do ahead, your leadership is invaluable as we keep working and moving forward together. So with that, representatives, so thank you. That'd be a great thing to say, sort of at the end of that. Probably should have started there. So thank you for your work and your service and your commitment. At this time, representatives of the district's Executive Council Administrative Team are pleased to recognize the Cedar Rapids School Board of Education for their time and commitment to students, staff, and the citizens of this community. So thanks for all you do. And I have these, but you guys are going to shake hands. There you go. Go for it. Yeah, good.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your help. Thanks for doing this. Thank you for all the years. Thank you for taking care of my daughter. You've helped me a lot of times. Okay. Yeah, I like it. I like it.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your support. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for your work. Thank you for working with us.
Hey. Appreciate your support.
Yeah. Very nice.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
Wash did it.
Oh, Wash does.
Really?
First name.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Again.
Now, that we don't love all of our staff and teachers, but there is this little germanx thing I recommend.
And I'd recommend they do the same. It's not, you know, anything.
Oh, and you're in schools all day long. Goodness. All right. All right, with that, thank you, everybody, for all the recognition. We have amazing staff that do amazing things every day with our kiddos in this district, and we're very proud of all of them. So with that, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, for superintendent's report.
Yeah, thanks, President Laberty. That is actually a great segue. We have a number of items on the superintendent's report tonight, so I'm going to dig right in. I'd like to kick things off with some exciting news in the world of our high school journalism programs. The 2018 Spring Journalism Contest results are in, and I'm pleased to congratulate Kennedy and Washington for their compliments, accomplishments. The Iowa High School Press Association awarded Kennedy's torch with three awards in the categories of news photography and sports stories. Washington Surveyor received 12 awards in the categories of design, online reporting, writing, and photography. This is the strongest showing that the surveyors had in the contest in the eight years under their current advisor, Kyle Phillips. So congratulations to both journalism programs at Kennedy and Wash. Jefferson has also experienced significant success recently. Their academic decathlon team finished sixth in the highly competitive Division One at the national competition earlier this spring in Frisco, Texas. They finished ninth overall out of 72 teams and earned seven individual medals. Chiara Affatigato earned two individual medals in music and art. Sophia Pyonak earned a bronze medal in art. Haley Varro earned a gold medal and a perfect score in interview. Clara Heathman earned three individual medals in arts, social science, and a gold medal in speech. Congratulations to these students and their coach, Kevin Darrell. A hearty congratulations is also extended to three CRCSD students who placed in the 2018 Kirkwood Auto Tech Academy Competition. The annual event is a day of hands-on learning, engagement with industry professionals, and friendly competition. Congratulations to Jefferson High School's Tyler Hurt and Fernando Castillo, Kennedy High School's Noah Matthews, and their instructor, Scott Johnson. Kudos also go out to several CRCSD staff members for their recent accomplishments and recognitions. First, it was announced this spring that Joan Steckel, Pro Start instructor at Washington High School, has been selected as one of several educators across the nation to receive the 2018 Pro Start National Educator of Excellence Award. This prestigious award recognizes, rewards, and honors educators who've demonstrated excellence in their Pro Start classrooms. Pro Start's a nationwide high school program that unites the classroom and industry to develop the best and brightest talent in tomorrow's restaurant and food service leaders. Joan will be honored at the annual awards gala this week, May 17th, in Chicago for her efforts. Efforts. Congratulations, Joan. Next, we congratulate curriculum facilitator Tara Traister on her recent appointment to the National Alliance for Partnership in Equities Executive Committee. NAPES strives to achieve its mission of building educators' capacity to implement effective solutions for increasing student access, educational equity, and workforce diversity. The NAPES Executive Committee is the leadership of NAPES Board of Directors and is charged with general management of NAPES affairs. Tara's one of 11 members who serves on this national committee. She'll begin as the Chair of the Bylaws Subcommittee on July 1st. Congratulations to Tara. It was also recently announced that Grant Schultz, Activities Director at Cedar Rapids Washington High School, has been recognized by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association... I practiced that a few times. I'm not going to lie. NIAAA as a certified athletic administrator. To earn this distinction, Grant has demonstrated the highest level of knowledge and expertise in the field of interscholastic athletic administration. The voluntary certification process included a thorough evaluation of the candidate's educational background, experience, and professional contributions, as well as a rigorous, comprehensive written examination. Grant's one of an elite group of interscholastic athletic administrators nationwide to attain this level of professionalism. Congratulations to Grant. The accomplishments of those three staff members offer a valuable reminder that our district is indeed home to highly qualified, nationally-recognized educators who commitment to our students runs deep and who passionately work to deliver on the promise of every learner future-ready. This spring, we bid farewell to our 2018 retirees whose commitment to our students runs equally deep and who have collectively contributed 1,543 years of service to our school district. Their efforts as teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of our students and have strengthened our Cedar Rapids Community School District and community. Let's take a moment to view a short video that honors our retirees' dedication to our district and which highlights three of our most tenured retirees.
As you embark on this new phase of your life's journey, you may be excited to wake up at your leisure, try a new adventure, or invest more time in your hobbies and passions. You have worked hard for what comes next in your life. You have provided the students of the Cedar Rapids Community School District with a safe and healthy environment. You've encouraged good nutrition and good manners. You've delivered them to school and home safely. As educators, you've not only guided them on a path of academic success, you've cared for them through sickness, through sadness, through joy, and discovery. As administrators, you have contributed too, to the health of the organization by leading the fourth-largest staff in the county. Together, you have embraced the power of "we" to deliver on the promise of every learner future-ready.
I have enjoyed having multiple opportunities over the 38 years.
I'm proud that of my time all at Metro High School, my dedication to my job.
I've been doing the Building Trade Student Belt House program for the last 20-plus years, and my most enjoyable thing is that working with the students, watching them grow and mature, see the progress that they make throughout the year.
The second generations of students I have encountered over the years and over the hundred graduations that I've attended.
And then when they come back to visit sometimes to see how much they are able to apply what they might have learned in my class. That's what gives me a lot of joy.
I guess I would just say I'm proud to have been able to help children and families for 38 years, so that's what makes me proud, and be in one place, one district, for that long.
Continue with the "every learner future-ready" motto and continue to grow as a district.
To continue the power of "we," that it's really important to work together to meet the needs of kids, and so I really like that idea of the power of "we."
Thing about... that I'm looking most to right now in retirement is having a second cup of coffee and enjoy reading the paper in the morning. So if you're one of those people that don't like rushing off to work like I am, there is light at the end of the tunnel.
In gratitude and celebration, we say thank you as you transition into retirement. Now, now is your time.
Nice, very nice. Now, I have one more. Finally, our students at Johnson's Team Academy and Grantwood Elementary experienced a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity earlier this month. History maker Ruby Bridges visited both schools and spoke about her experiences as the first African-American child to attend an all-white public elementary school in the American South. Ruby Bridges was six years old when she was escorted to class by her mother and U.S. Marshals due to violent mobs. As part of her presentation to the students, she shared a video clip of the angry mob shouting at her as she walked to school on her first day in 1960. She explained to our Johnson and Grantwood students, "Your first day did not look like that, and that has everything to do with my first day." She went on to engage the students in an interactive and inspiring presentation on the importance of equity, civil rights, and academic opportunity for all. Ruby Bridges' visit was made possible by very generous funding from St. Paul's Church, where certain lessons she taught her students during her visit will resonate with them through adulthood. So lots going on, exciting experience.
There is. That's awesome. All right, thank you, Dr. Buck. With that, we'll move to board reports. Any comments from the board? Gary?
Legislation is wrapped up for the year. I'm kind of waiting to see the final toll as it comes out from UEN. But as we know, SAVE did not pass, but it was not because of some... a lot of local support that we had for it. So Dr. Buck and I think other board members appreciate the lobbying that you did with our legislators. Got it through the House. We had local legislators that supported it in the Senate, but it just, it never came to a vote. So we'll continue to work on that. It's something that needs to happen, and I believe, I think, as most of the board members here believe, that it will happen next year with some continued work. Iowa School Board Association Exec Board will meet this week, and on that presentation... during that time, we'll have a presentation from the Iowa... about the Iowa test. Representatives from the University of Iowa Testing Program will come to our board meeting and make a presentation. So looking forward to hearing what they have to say and how we can hopefully move forward with and have a good measurement. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Dr. Buck, for your... all the positives that we heard at the beginning as I go around and I talk with the teachers, the staff, recognition. We know our students are learning as it walk out the door, and I think you gave some excellent examples of the great, great students we have and because of the great staff. So thank you, and stay tuned.
Any other board reports or comments? Jennifer?
I have just a few. I was able to attend McKinley's first-ever STEAM Expo, and Mrs. Wilson did a fantastic job of putting that together. Lots of representation for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. They were all there. Some hands-on stuff that the students were participating in. It was just really cool to see that framework kind of getting put together. And also was able to attend the Roosevelt Creative Quarter Business Academy Open House. And the student ownership, this is the first year of that being the RCCBA, student ownership, the understanding that they have with their programming, the love they have for their electives, the project-based learning, the hands-on learning, was just awesome, just awesome to see the students really take hold of their education and enjoy it and love it and be able to talk about it at a pretty deep level with the community. So that was cool.
Awesome, thank you. Any other board comments or reports? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. This is a time for people in the public to address the board, and if you've already filled out one of our green request forms, we'll go ahead and call your name. Laurel Day is the board secretary, and she'll time the five minutes that you have when I call your name. If you could approach the podium and speak right into the microphone, just let us know your name and your address, and if there's any particular organization that you're representing, that's always helpful as well. And again, if there's any follow-up to any of your information to the board, we'll go ahead and ask the administration to follow up directly with you on those particular pieces of information. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with Matthew Clay. Mr. Clay?
Matthew Clay, 3508 Elm Avenue Southeast. I'm just a parent of a student. I had a speech prepared, but I'm not going to be able to get through the whole thing. So I'm just going to summarize. My son, he's five years old. He started kindergarten this year. We found out through mid-year that he is gifted, and he also has an unspecified anxiety disorder, which is pretty common with gifted children. And some of the aspects with giftedness, how they develop asynchronously, like they have high intellectual needs or high intellectual abilities, but their social-emotional skills aren't great by any means. So there have been a few instances throughout the school year which really took away from his experience through these foundation years of his, you know, learning. There have been many great people at Kenwood Leadership Academy, Mr. Brandon, Ms. Ainger, and his teacher, Ms. Evan Schwartz have all been phenomenal, and they've worked very well in trying to understand giftedness in general. There are some cases with the... some of the staff that I'm not going to get into now, but they are detailed in the speech that I will give copies to you guys. But it just shows that giftedness is very misunderstood, and meeting social-emotional needs of gifted children needs to be just as important as meeting their intellectual needs, which we tend to focus on intellectual needs more than social-emotional, and the social-emotional needs are, I feel, just as important, if not more important. And I really hope that the district reads what I got to help understand the situation that I've been in through this whole year. Because my son, he, being in kindergarten, five years old, he hates going to school. He has panic attacks about going to school. So there have been a few instances throughout the school year which really took away from his experience through these foundation years of his, you know, learning. There have been many great people at Kenwood Leadership Academy, Mr. Brandon, Ms. Ainger, and his teacher, Ms. Evan Schwartz, have all been phenomenal, and they've worked very well in trying to understand giftedness in general. There are some cases with the, some of the staff that I'm not going to get into now, but they are detailed in the speech that I will give copies to you guys. But it just shows that giftedness is very misunderstood, and meeting social-emotional needs of gifted children needs to be just as important as meeting their intellectual needs, which we tend to focus on intellectual needs more than social-emotional, and the social-emotional needs are, I feel, just as important, if not more important. And I really hope that the district reads what I got to help understand the situation that I've been in through this whole year. Because my son, he, being in kindergarten, five years old, he hates going to school. He has panic attacks about going to school. He says he doesn't want to be, that he wants to be somebody else, and these are all very troubling things to deal with as a parent, and I'm really hoping that the district really makes more of an effort to understand social-emotional needs of gifted children.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. We definitely will read your comments, and I'm guessing an administrator will follow up with you.
I do want to make a point. The situations are outlined, and I do consider them resolved, and I don't, I don't wish for any more action whatsoever. They're just, they're there to illustrate situations that we've been through, but I am not looking for any more actions from the, from the school district or the board.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate you sharing your personal comments with us. Next, I'll invite Willa Stroshine. Willa? Do, will you do this together? Is that how you wanted to do this, or?
Just gonna say.
Okay, all right. And then Josephine Norris, so you can just go back-to-back if that's okay.
Okay. My name is, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
My name is Willa Stroshine. I live at 3627 Honey Hill Drive. I'm from Washington High School, I'm a freshman there. And me and Josie are from the LGBT Education Committee. We're just here to spread awareness about our cause. So basically, we were given the option to do a PBL project in our LA class, and we were given, it was like, we got to do whatever we wanted. So we felt that the wellness for LGBT students was like lacking, so, because there's not a lot of representation, which violates the CRCD mission and the intercultural mindset. And I think that it's pretty harmful to young people who can't learn about themselves. And why, one of the main reasons that we did this is we noticed a lot of like homophobic slurs in our school, and we felt that there was a bit of a trickle-down effect from the middle schools. So we thought that since the middle school wellness programs were required, we could start there. And so, so far, we've met with Dr. Grant, and we've also got support from Planned Parenthood. We also met with McKinley GSA, which is really cool. We talked to Mr. Martinez, the principal of McKinley. We also met with the McKinley Wellness Teacher. We talked to Jennifer Voish, one of the board members. And then we're also going to meet with Noreen Bush this Wednesday, actually. So we just feel that there's not a lot of representation, and we'd like that to be changed. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Willa, for your comments.
Hi, guys. My name is Josie Norris, and I live at 1844 Second Avenue Southeast. And I'd like to thank you guys for your time, because I know this is volunteer staff, and this means, it means a lot for our, for our voices to be heard, so thank you. And with the problem, the problem is no representation, and the solution to that is to incorporate inclusive standards to make the mission statement and intercultural mindset applicable to all in the CRSD school, CR, CSD school district. And this, another solution is to spread education out between grades, so eventually like working up to more in-depth descriptions from sixth grade to eighth grade, to teach accepting behavior to students. And our goals are to reduce homophobia and reduce slur use, which tied together, and to educate on safe sex for LGBT youth definitions, mental health, and slur origination or meanings of slurs, and to educate on how to come out to someone if you're LGBT, or how to react to someone that's coming out to you if they are LGBT, because this area is lacking in there, in the middle school wellness program. And so we felt that we would have a say in that, and we would like to change that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Josephine, and Willa. We appreciate your comments, and we'll definitely take those comments into account, and appreciate that you're meeting with some of the administrators in the district as well. So you're doing, taking all the right steps to help, help your voice be heard, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the board would like to pull for discussion Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written due to the personnel report and BA 18349 and 351, the terms and conditions of employment?
So move.
Second.
Again, this is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Boortz?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Lavery?
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll move into learning and leadership, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, to discuss the new school design process.
Yeah, so thanks, President Lavery. So I'm just going to give kind of a quick overview. Brett's going to talk a little bit, John's going to give some practical application to what Brett's describing sort of in the theoretical models, and then I'm going to follow up with some conversation potentially about options. So as, as Director Anhalt noted, the SAVE wasn't passed in this legislative session, but we thought it would still be important to keep this information in front of the board and just kind of be talking about kind of current state and what future state might look like. And so Brett's going to talk to you, us, a little bit about the variety of ways in which processes to design and build schools can occur, and then John will follow up with what's happening with local districts and how they're doing it. So with that, Brett, if you want to dive in, if you would please?
Sure. Appreciate the ability to provide a brief presentation and an overview of the available options and processes to design and build schools. There are really three options that are available. The first one is the design-bid-build process. The second option is the construction manager process, and the third option is the design-bill process. And I believe all the board members and also Dr. Buck and Secretary Day have a copy, so if you want to make notes or if you have any questions, please let me know. In regard to the design-build, or design-bid-build model, really, there's three entities involved in that process. It's the district, an architect, and a contractor, and then there's two separate contracts that would control that process, involving a contract between the district and the architect, and then a contract between the district and the contractor. And that process is very traditional, and it has been a process that the district has used as far as many of the projects that it's done in the past. Those types of projects basically have three sequential phases that are part of those projects. The first phase is the design phase, so that requires the services of a designer who would be an architect in this instance, and that person is the designer of record for the project. Then the second sequential phase is the bid phase, where a contractor is selected, and under Iowa law, that is the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and that's reached through a competitive sealed bid process for a fixed-price contract. And then the third phase is the construction phase, where the project is constructed by a contractor with the architect providing contract management services. So like I said, that's the more traditional model that the district has used in the past and many school districts around the state use. As far as the advantages that are part of the design-bid-build process, under the design-bid-build process, the district controls the design and the construction. The design changes, if necessary, are easily accommodated prior to the start of construction. The design is complete prior to the award of construction contract, so you know what the project's intended to be, what the design of the project is prior to construction starting. Construction cost is fixed at the time the contract is awarded, and it's actually in those contracts. The bidding process results in the lowest responsive responsible bidder and provides a maximum opportunity for contractors to bid and provides competition. It's fairly easy to implement, and the district controls the design and the construction quality. Some additional considerations as part of the design-bid-build process, it certainly requires district expertise and resources to be effectively implemented. There is a shared responsibility for the project delivery, so the district plays a pretty big role as part of that process. There is a risk for the district if the designer makes errors in the project. You know, design and construction are sequential, so there's a definite process that's followed, but one step of the process needs to be completed before the next step of the process occurs. Construction costs aren't confirmed until the award of the contract, and there is limited contractor input in design and planning. So that's the design-bid-build process. The next process would be the construction manager model. There's three entities involved in that process also, the district, the architect, and the construction manager. And there's two separate contracts in that, in this model also. The district and the construction manager have a contract, and the district and the architect have a contract. The construction manager, their commitment as part of this process is to deliver a project within a defined schedule and price, and the price is usually expressed in either a lump sum or a guaranteed maximum price. And then the construction process is linear with the construction manager providing construction input to the district during the design phase, and then the construction manager usually serves as the general contractor during the construction phase. So some of the advantages to the construction manager option are that it transfers responsibility for construction and some risk from the district to the construction manager. The construction costs are known and fixed during the design phase. The construction manager has total control of construction and all of the subcontractors as part of the construction process. And the construction may start before design is completed, and in many instances, that allows for a reduced project schedule, because there's two things kind of going on at once. It's not as sequential as the design-bid-build process. Some additional considerations involving the construction manager model, it reduces the amount of control the district has as far as construction. Design changes that are made after construction begins are usually pretty costly, and there's a potential conflict of interest when you have the same entity serving as a construction manager and a general contractor. So those are some additional considerations with that model. The third model is the design-build model. In that instance, there's two entities involved, the district and a, what's called the design-bill entity, and there's only one contract between the district and that same entity. The design-bill entity is responsible for designing and constructing the project to meet the requirements set out in the contract, and it's a much more integrated construction process versus the sequential construction process of the design-bid-build process, where there is overlapping design and construction, even more so overlapping than the construction manager process. Some of the advantages of the design-build model are that a single entity is responsible for design and construction. That construction may start before completion of the design, which may reduce the project schedule. Construction costs are usually known and fixed during the design phase, and a transfer of design and construction risk is, occurs from the district to the design-bill entity, so that they have a lot of responsibility. It certainly requires less district expertise and resources because of the fact that the design-bill entity would be in charge of the design and the construction. Some of the considerations that are involved with the design-build model are that the district has a minimal amount of control of the design and the construction quality. This model requires a comprehensive and carefully-prepared performance specification in order to be successful. Design changes after construction begins are costly, and that's also, again, part of the construction manager model. Potential conflict of interest exists, just like in the construction manager model, when you have the design-bill entity serving as both the designer and the contractor, and no party is directly responsible for representing the district's interests, because the design-bill entity is focused on the design and the construction. So there's a little bit of concern in that respect. And this process can end up with high bid costs and fewer bidders, because you have the design entity constructing also at the same time, so there's not as much opportunity for bids and for participation in the project. The last thing I would just mention is, first of all, if there's any questions, please let me know, but, you know, the adage that I always follow is, no matter what delivery method you use, the strengths and weaknesses of the individuals that are working on your project are key, and they're going to have more of an impact probably than on the manner in which you organize your contracts and your projects. And I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of really high-quality people here at the district who have a lot of experience in working with these types of arrangements, architects, contractors, supervising projects, and things like that. And so I think that that's an important consideration for the board to, you know, take as part of this overall process, is to really focus on the quality people that you have working on these projects, and certainly to continue to use those to the extent that you can, because it's a valuable resource for the district.
So as, as we look at our projects, and we're going to talk about it more, but we, we don't have just one building that we're looking at. We have multiple buildings that sit on different sites. Some of them are build, building new on the same site, some of them are rehabbing older sites. Is there any, any benefit to one of these, knowing that we have multiple sites, I mean, potentially?
Yeah, I think the design-bid-build is probably the most flexible, just because it can deal with a lot of different situations, whether it's new construction or renovation. There's a lot of flexibility there, and especially when you're dealing with, a major part of it is being a design and having a dedicated design phase and then a construction phase, and having that be sequential, so that plans can be made and timelines can be established. You know, there's, there's nothing wrong with the construction manager model or the design-bid model, but those are usually for very specific projects when you're looking at trying to compress the timeline to get something built, you know, with, in a shorter timeframe. You know, the, my review of your timeframe and your, you know, facilities plan indicates that there's enough lead time there to be, you know, very intentional about having a separate design phase and having a separate construction phase, so that those things can be sequential, so that they can be carefully considered and that the projects can be dealt with. And it doesn't mean that you have to do one project and then be done with it and wrap all that up and then, you know, do another one, but it provides that ongoing sequence of construction on varied projects, so you can have, you know, parallel paths on, you know, implementing an overall plan and still then not have any of the issues that you may have with another model, where you're compressing the timelines and you're having one entity do a lot of different things. There's this good segregation of duties with the design-bid-build. And it also is something that's, you know, set out in Chapter 26 of the Iowa Code as far as competitive bidding. That's, the design-bid-build is the best fit for the structure that you have to follow and the requirements you need to meet under Chapter 26 of the Iowa Code for competitive bidding.
Thanks. Other questions?
I do have one.
Oh, go ahead.
So with each of the different models, whatever agreement ultimately, you know, terms, conditions, all those things come together, are they based on, you know, a time, like a length of time? Are they just based on a project? Does it matter one way or the other, or is it one more common than the other? Is it up to, you know, us as a district, or can you explain a little bit about that?
Yeah, a lot of it deals with defining the scope of the project and the services that you want as part of the scope of the project. And so the district has a lot of flexibility in contracting under any one of the models to determine the scope. You know, the reason that, in, you know, the outline that I provided, the entities involved is to show you who you'd be working with, but as the owner of the project, you have quite a bit of discretion in setting what the parameters are of the scope of the project and the timelines involved in getting then the expertise, whether it be an architect, construction manager, or a design-bill entity to be involved in your project.
Okay, all right, thanks. Gary?
As we had discussions in the community about our long-range facility plan, one of the things that the plan that we decided on had places for public input into the design of the, of the structures and also the decommissioning, if, want to say, of other schools, if that be the case. Are there any one of these three models that would be more compatible with that model of having, being able to have the public have direct, some, some input into the design and capture that?
In looking at the three models, I believe the design-bid-build would be the most advantageous for that, because of the sequential nature of the construction process under that model. It is very clear that the design work happens first, and the building doesn't start until the design has been locked in and defined, because then that's what's used then to send up proposals for contractors to submit competitive bids pursuant to. And, you know, in the other models, the construction manager model and the design-bid model, that all kind of occurs at the same time, and construction can start in some instances before the design has been fully completed. And so if there is certainly a need to have public input on any one of the projects as part of the facility master plan, I think the design-bid-build process would be the best, because that allows full input and full definition of the scope and terms of the design before you even get into the construction phase. terms of the design before you even get into the construction phase, and would allow the design to be fully articulated so that the district could get the most competitive bids and the best workers and the best costs on those projects.
Would the, kind of as a follow-up, would the architect firm have, be, could they be responsible for having, facilitating that public input?
Yes. Yes, they can be part of that, and they can even, you know, it depends on the nature of the district's agreement with the architect. A lot of school districts do facility surveys for districts. A lot of architects provide input into current and existing facilities, assess input ideas, feedback from the public. And in many instances, a lot of the public comments that are made and public input that's made as part of that process do get integrated into the design of the project. So you certainly, I would encourage any district to work closely with their architect and make him well aware of the fact that public input is very important into whatever project the district does, and let the architect know that it's the district's expectation that the architect will take the public input into account in designing the project. And then also then carrying it through to the construction phase also, because under the design-bid-build, your architect not only serves as a designer, but then also performs construction management services throughout the course of the project too. So they not only design the project, but then they also are a very important party that is the district's representative to make sure that the project is constructed pursuant to the contract and the specifications.
So one thing that may be addition, I don't mean to cut you off there, Gary.
No, that's all right.
So tonight is just kind of giving you some background in the ways this can be done. One of the things that might be helpful, if, for example, we so did design-bid-build, there would likely be an RFP process at some point in there to pick an architect to design the school. And that would be a real opportunity potentially to have them describe the ways in which they've engaged the community and the, and strategies they've used that have been especially successful and those types of things. So I think when you really get into, when we get to the point where we decide on using one of these models, and then we start to dig into actually picking a firm, for example, that could absolutely be a point of discussion that we want to amplify in the process, so.
I can't believe it's been 20 years, I believe, since we built Viola Gibson. Does anyone know the process that was used? I was, I was a member of the staff at that time, and I know, I was very pleased with the, with the process because staff had input into what they would like to see as far as within the building.
Yeah, we believe that was design-bid-build.
That is my understanding also in reviewing prior projects, that the design-bid-build was the process used for most of the district's projects in the past.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Because John's got some additional feedback. So I asked him to go to connect with Iowa City, Linmar, places where they've recently done work with schools. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate that. Man, I am slow with the thank yous tonight. I'll get better at that. So.
Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, and the staff members are going like, that's a new thing. So John's going to talk a little bit about experiences they've had and which they've chosen, and so he'll give you some feedback.
So me and Steve Graham, we reached out to College Community, Linmar, and Iowa City, three neighboring districts, like-sized districts that have had more large construction projects here in the recent past, on what their experiences are with construction managers, design-bid-build, design-build, the way they've gone. So really, there was an overwhelming theme there with those three entities, that they do the design-bid-build process. But the oversight of the projects differs a little bit between the three, so I'll kind of explain that here a little bit. So at College Community, they actually hire an outside individual to do some of their oversight. So she is, ends up being an employee of College Community, but wasn't currently employed. That is her role, is to oversee the projects to make sure that they're meeting specifications. And so she's kind of the representative, and she'll take what she learns at meetings from the job site and then report back to their internal team. At Linmar, they use a longtime staff member there to do that same type of thing, and I'm not sure exactly what his role is, is there at Linmar, but he's not in the operations department from my understanding, but he goes to the construction meetings and then same thing, reports back. At Iowa City, they use somebody from their operations department, Buildings and Grounds Department, whatever they call that down there. It is, they're actually funded through the SAVE fund, which is something that Steve had brought up that could be a potential there is if there needs to be more, if that option is chosen and we need more oversight of district personnel, that that is, could be paid for from the SAVE fund. So that was kind of the three things there. Their operations manager at Linmar, I spoke to him directly, and he had said in the past, since he's been there, they haven't used a construction manager service. But prior to that, they tried one in 1998, and they tried one on two elementary buildings in '07 and '08. And the overwhelming impression there is that that was not a successful choice on their end, that they much rather preferred to keep that in-house and go through the design-bid-build process. So that's kind of a short summary there of what those three districts have done in the recent past.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question, just about with the RFPs and when we're going through the design process. So is that going to be one design that's kind of bid on all of the buildings? Or is it a new process for each building?
So Dr. Buck can probably comment on that a little bit, but I'll give my two cents first.
And then just correct it, John.
Exactly, exactly. So the way that we have it for the first two buildings, because from my understanding is we're going to do two buildings, take a pause, kind of reflect on what that went, is that schedule, it's in front of you, so I'm jumping ahead a little bit, has an RFP process for both. And from my understanding is, that doesn't have to happen, but that's kind of the way that we portrayed it to start with, with giving the opportunity for architectural firms to bid on both. And then also, that would be public input from both. So it wouldn't be necessarily the same building in both locations, because we want that public input. So unless the public input's identical, it'd be pretty difficult to build two identical buildings.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you.
So I agree.
Good job, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, John. So if we could just transition a little now. So you have this long document in front of you, and so just wanted you to be thinking a little bit. So we heard a little bit about how these processes can work. We've heard what some of our neighbors do. It gives you some idea what we might want to be thinking about. But the document that you have in front of you, that very first line, option one, is the original timeline with no changes. So if we start to think about, okay, so SAVE didn't pass in this session. SAVE is the funding stream that's been designated for this, this plan. So what might that mean? And what are some potential options to be kicking around? And again, I would go back to, nothing gets decided tonight. This is really just starting to think, okay, so what are some potential options? And honestly, this may not be all of the options that there possibly are, but there's some of them that seem to make some sense about different ways to think about it. So the very top one there is the original timeline. So you'll see architect's selection process would have been May of 18, kind of through November, and that would have been RFP and some process that would have gotten an architect on board if we were, and this is sort of thinking this as design-bid-build as a process, but again, that could be a different one, depending on board interest. Then we get into the design phase, and so we'd promise the community, when we passed the framework, is that we would begin Coolidge input sessions in January of 2019. You may recall that. So you see, that process for planning begins in December and rolls into January. Then, school is designed by the architect by September of 19. The bid phase occurs, and you would have heard about that tonight. And then, as soon as the frost is out of the ground in 2020, we start to build the school, so March-ish of 2020. And then the school opens for business in August of 2021. Then down below that, the new Jackson would be architect selection process, as John was talking about and describing, down below there. Then a design phase, again, a bid phase in 2020, shovels in the ground when the frost is out in 2021, and then the school opens in 2022. So that is what we put in front of the public in the framework. That was approved in January or so. So some other things we could start to think about is, with option two, we could look at delaying Coolidge by a year and leave Jackson scheduled as is. And in this option, both of them would be running in tandem on identical schedules. So one consideration there is, we could go through this process, identify two architects, for example, if we use the design-bid-build process, and then two different architecture firms running this process in tandem, beginning a little bit later. So by, what you'd notice in that one is legislative session in 2019, we'd have a better sense of what may happen in that session, and then just roll that process forward in parallel. So does that make sense as a potential option? So, okay, so that's what that one looks like. Option three is to delay both Coolidge and Jackson by a year. So essentially, what you have in option three is each of this thing, it's literally just a one-year setback if we were to choose to do that. And then, option four, another potential consideration, is to condense the RFP and design phases of the work. And so as we've been talking, we've been talking informally with architects and construction managers, is that the right? And just trying to get some feedback sort of generally about our plan. And one of the things they've acknowledged is, the timeline, the original timeline is long and could be compressed without real issues. So one of the things, one of the architect groups mentioned is, you know, one possibility here is you could compress these timelines and still stay on track, kind of what you're thinking about. So if you compress the timeline, architect's selection process could happen in January or February of 2019. The design phase gets shortened a bit, but they thought that would be a realistic design phase. And then you see the plan rolling forward, and then essentially, if you do that, you end up with Coolidge opening in fall of 2021 and Jackson opening in fall of 2022, in line with the original framework. And then, option five is similar to four, the difference being that Jackson gets accelerated as well. So essentially, what you're doing is you're morphing option two and option four for a tandem condensed plan that runs them together and then both open in 2021. So there's lots of ways to, and I'm sure this isn't all the ways that one could think about how this could be done, but it gets you thinking about what some of the options potentially are. So. Questions about any of that?
Questions?
So this is just information for us to look at.
Think about.
Think about what we're going.
What this could mean.
The direction we'll go.
So, yeah.
So the biggest question with doing two at the same time, so like option five, where they're in tandem together, do we have the capacity, you know, staffing-wise, to manage two of these projects simultaneously with
That's a great question.
two different levels of, of community input going on?
So currently, just thinking about this and moving forward, is we have two construction manager personnel in the Buildings and Grounds Department now. So with our, our current peple promise and those types of projects, that would end up being a full-time job for, for one person. That load would obviously decrease with the building new schools and projects getting deferred, similar to what we did this year. So that would become a one, a one-person job, a lot of work, but we could make it work with one person. And one school would be a one-person job. So if we ran two in tandem, we would have to add some internal staff. And that's when the conversation was started by Steve, that the SAVE fund can actually do that, so it would still protect the general fund. We wouldn't need any general fund resources to do that.
Okay. And so since this is planned over a number of years, that position would last through that whole timeline?
Correct. And preliminary conversation, so I don't want to speak for Steve. He understands that stuff a lot more than I ever will. But yeah, that it would be a contract period that, when this plan is complete, then that position would dissolve.
Yeah, and so, so thank you, John. If that all goes well, if we did that and that goes well, and then we do the pause and we like that process, that position could be in place then for a number of years as this unfolds.
I think one thing that, that we've seen is that during these, whether it's remodeling, repurposing, construction, whatever, to have somebody from the district there every day to, to watch what's going on is pretty critical. So if that means getting somebody else on staff to do that, I would certainly be supportive of that idea. Other questions or comments? This is great, great work, and unfortunately, the SAVE, as Gary said, didn't get extended, but there is great hope, and because of some technicalities evidently, and the Senate, it sounded like there was good support. So we'll keep fighting the good fight for at least another year and see where we end up, and.
Can I just give one more?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And just one reminder, it was passed in the House 95 to 3. So there, there is some amount.
Huge, huge bipartisan support.
Yeah, so.
And I think even in the Senate, we saw very strong support across both parties, so.
If it would have been brought up as a clean bill, I think it, I think there would have been bipartisan, I'm almost sure there'd been bipartisan support to move, but it never reached the floor.
Yep, yep. And again, this, why it's so important for us as well, to have individual organizations and across the educational spectrum at the state level, with their lobbyists all on the same page on this, how important it is to, to our kids moving forward in their education. Facilities do make a difference in that environment for staff and kids. So we'll keep pushing on it and hopefully all get in tandem together with that. All right, anything else? Awesome. Thank you for all your work on this. This is good stuff. Brent, thanks for coming to share all that expertise with us. We appreciate it. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to the human resources section. These are reduction enforced terminations of teacher contracts. Linda, do you have any comments you want to make about, we'll vote on each of these separate per legal counsel recommendations, so.
Yeah, thank you. I certainly didn't have anything prepared to talk about, but I'll just mention, whenever we do a reduction in force, those things are not easy for anyone. It's a process that we, we have to be very diligent about and work through. And we do this in a way that we try to help our employees as they work through this process, and we spend a lot of time talking with them and kind of explaining how, what it, what the impact is to them. And then they do have recall rights for two years. We fully anticipate all of the employees that we've spoken to will end up with roles with the district in a very short order, but for sure, within that two, two-year timeframe, for those that do choose to stay on with the district. So although it, you know, we never like to have these things on the board agenda, we are very optimistic that there are roles available for them.
Great. Thank you, Linda. That's helpful, and I think it helps the public understand as well why this is happening. So with that, we'll go ahead and do each of these individually. BA 18360 is reduction in force termination of the teacher contract for Mary Garing. These are roll call votes.
Correct.
That's correct.
Does there need to be any discussion, or no? No discussion? Okay. All right, so these are roll call votes.
So Director Borcherting?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Electively, yes.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. BA 18361 is reduction in force termination of teacher contract for Carrie Havlick.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Humbles? Aye.
Director Borcherting?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. BA 18362 is reduction in force termination of teacher contract for Charles Betts.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Borcherting?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. BA 18363 is reduction in force termination for teacher contract for Emily Thompson.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Borcherting?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. And BA 18364 is reduction in force termination of teacher contract for Billiana Somovic.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Borcherting?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. I may have mispronounced that last name, apologies. All right, thank you. Certainly something we don't like to have happen, but we understand it has to happen, We will move into a closed session for evaluation of the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered. Would somebody like to read a motion for that closed session?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, May 14, 2018, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual request a closed session as provided in Section 21.5, 1I of the Iowa Code.
Is there a second?
A second.
And this is a roll call vote? And this is a roll call vote.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Borchertin?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. And before we move into the closed session and close this part of the meeting, we will have a moment of silence and I'll turn that over to Linda Nagle.
I'd like to ask the Board to close our meeting in a moment of silence as we recognize the life of two of our employees, Mary Eaton Pearson and Deb Tapkin, who have recently passed away. Mary Eaton Catherine Pearson passed away on Friday, May 4th, 2018 at her residence. She began her role with the Cedar Rapids School District on October 9th, 2007. Maryetta was most recently a Title I paraprofessional at Madison Elementary School where she taught students in small groups and one-to-one settings in their areas of math and reading. Maryetta was particularly talented with boys who struggled with academics and had a negative outlook towards learning, oftentimes turning their outlook from "I can't" to "I'll try." In addition to her work with the school setting, Maryetta was a talented musician sharing her gift with area churches and within the Kirkwood and New Horizon Bands. Maryetta received her Bachelor's of Music in 1964, graduating in the honors program with high distinction from the University of Iowa. She held a permanent professional teaching certificate and a master's degree in piano performance and literature. She was an educator for 21 years as a classroom teacher and a paraprofessional. Maryetta is survived by four children, Bill, Jean, John, and James of Cedar Rapids, three stepchildren, Rhonda, Julie, and Mark, five grandchildren, Kristen, Wesley, Branson, Aurora Grace, Jasper, and one on the way, step-grandchildren, Kristen, Brent, and Craig, and step-great-granddaughter, Jocelyn, one brother, Carl Jackson, and one special niece, Catherine Hobart. Deb Tapkin passed away on Sunday, April 29th, at Mercy Medical Center. She was born in Cedar Rapids, Iowa and attended Washington High School and Mount Mercy College. She began her role with the Cedar Rapids School District on October 4th, 1999. Deb Tapkin served as a special education paraprofessor at Taylor for many years. She was scheduled to retire at the end of this year. Deb loved Taylor School and all of the students in it. She always greeted the children, even the ones not in her program, with a smile and a friendly hello each day. She was dedicated to each and every student. She helped with Taylor's social committee and making sure that the staff lounge was always taken care of. Survivors include her Southern gentleman, Ricky Estrada, children Lori, Klein, Rhonda Boots, Stacy Applegate, Catherine Tapkin, and Melanie Simmons, and eight grandchildren. Deb enjoyed her time with her large family and friends and her bonus sister, Jan. Her hobbies included gardening, reading, and spending time crafting and cooking with her grandchildren. She loved her animals. She always rooted for the Green Bay Packers and Chicago Cubs. She will be missed and always loved by many. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Maryetta Pearson and Deb Tapkin, let us remember the lives of the students and staff that Maryetta and Deb have positively impacted as employees of our school district.
Thank you. If we could all have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our sympathies go out to Maryetta and Deb's families on behalf of the Board and the district. All right, with that, I'll just remind the Board that your calendars are included. Graduations start next Wednesday through Saturday, always a great time of year for us to celebrate those that are graduating and moving on to the next phase of their life. And there is a sheet for our evaluations. And with that, we'll adjourn this portion of the meeting and move into our closed session. Thank you.